All right. Good evening, citizens and city council. I'll now call the December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the West Richland City Council to order at six P. M. And before we get started, I'll ask Stephanie if she'll read the hybrid meeting ground rules and then call the roll.
Thank you. Tonight's meeting will be held in person with a virtual meeting component. If you are participating virtually, please make sure the name shown at the bottom of your video view is the name you would like the mayor to use. You can change this by right-clicking on your video view and selecting rename. Audience members present in the council chambers will be called upon first during public comment periods. Those participating remotely should virtually raise your hand if you wish to speak. To virtually raise your hand, click on Participants and then click on Raise Hand. If you are participating by phone only, press asterisk nine to raise your hand. Please limit your comments to three minutes. All right, roll call. Brent Gary?
Here.
Richard Bloom?
Here.
Fred Brink?
Here.
David Fettow?
Here.
May Hayes?
Here.
Kate Moran?
Present.
John Smart?
Here.
Ben Stoker?
Here.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Brink, would you please lead us in the pledge allegiance this evening?
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Brink. Appreciate that. Counsel, the agenda is before you this evening. Are there any changes to the agenda this evening? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Second, all in favor say aye.
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 Those like sign. Motion carries. Thank you. We do not have any presentations this evening, so we'll move on to the consent agenda, which is considered a basic city business of the council as well as staff and the taken with one motion and a vote. So the consent agenda this evening is the payment of the bills. Approve the minutes of the regular meeting December fifth, twenty twenty-three. Motion to accept the Everett Street Pressure Sewer Project as complete. Motion to authorize the mayor to execute Amendment Number One to the Washington State Department of Transportation Participating Agreement for the SR two twenty-four Red Mountain Vicinity Improvement Project. Motion authorizing the mayor to execute Amendment Number One to Engineering Services Contract for Road Right-Away Services for the SR two twenty-four Red Mountain Vicinity Improvement Project with Tara. Motion authorizing the mayor to execute Amendment Number Six to Engineering Services Contract for Well Number Ten ASR Project. J O B Motion Authorizing Public Works Director to Execute Amendment Number Five to Ecology Grant Agreement for Well Number Ten ASR Project. Motion to approve the agreement with Community Action Connection for Low-Income Housing Water Assistance Program. Motion to convert the Flock Annual Contract to a five-year and a year contract. Resolution eighty-three twenty-three Security and Improvement Agreement Transfer for Red Mountain Multi-Use Phase Two. Motion to authorize West Richland Chief of Police to sign the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four WASPIC WASTIC Traffic Safety Grant Application. Is there anyone from the audience who'd like to speak to the consent agenda this evening? Seeing no one. Is there anyone virtually who'd like to speak to the consent agenda this evening? If you do, raise your virtual hand or star nine. Be recognized. I see no one virtually. Stephanie, do you?
I do not.
Counsel, may I have a motion, please?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Those like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you. Now, this is the first opportunity for citizen public comment for items not on the agenda, and I'll remind you, not on the agenda. We'll get to that opportunity later on. And if you'd like to provide comments to the council, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Please limit your comments to three minutes. And as a reminder, council is not able to respond to any questions during comment period. Anyone in the audience for items not on the agenda? Seeing no one. Virtually. Star nine by phone or raise your virtual hand if you'd like to provide comment to the council this evening for items not on the agenda. And I see no one virtually. Stephanie, do you?
I do not.
We're gonna go ahead and move on to ordinances, resolutions, motions, and public hearings. Item eight A is an ordinance for the Municipal Code Text Amendment that would change the code to allow cannabis retail sales in light industrial zones. I'll ask Community Development Director Eric Menon Hall to present a staff report this evening. Eric?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Just to give you a background and summary of the occurrences that have happened thus far. Staff received an application from K N B Weaver LLC to allow cannabis sales in the city of West Richland. This request was not initiated by staff, the mayor, or council, but was an application received. Staff reviews reviewed the text amendment proposal with the Community and Economic Development Council Subcommittee on November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two and received feedback to bring the proposal for further discussion and consideration to the full council. Staff discussed the proposal of cannabis sales as part of a series of council budget workshops on January twenty-fourth and thirty-first in this year, which included council's recommendation to include the proposal of cannabis in the citywide survey. Staff included that in the citywide survey and that was conducted from May through June of this year. The survey was sent to three thousand fifty email addresses associated with utility billing and included the survey on social media and had Q R codes at the library and city hall. Out of approximately six thousand one hundred and fifty-nine households within the city limits, the city received six hundred and sixty-two citizen responses. Thirty-two percent or two hundred and twelve individuals stated they strongly supported. Sixteen percent or a hundred and six individuals somewhat supported. Eighteen percent or a hundred and nineteen individuals were neutral. Eight percent or fifty-three individuals were somewhat opposed. Twenty-six percent or a hundred and seventy-two individuals strongly opposed. Given this information, staff proceeded with the proposed text amendment for discussion with the Planning Commission on July seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. At the Planning Commission meeting, the commissioners asked for additional information on nine-one-one calls, annexation, restricted hours, and anticipated revenue. This information was provided to the Planning Commission at their August seventeenth meet sorry button. Thank you. And details on this data have been previously presented and are included in the staff report. Following discussion with the Planning Commission, staff provided the applicant's proposed text amendment to limit the use only to the L I zoning district and restricted the number of stores to one. The zoning code text amendment is a type seven permit. It is required to hold a public hearing before the Planning Commission and/or city council. And in this case, there has been public meetings or public hearings, both at the Planning Commission and city council. The Planning Commission is to issue a recommendation to city council to either approve or deny. The commission's recommendation is then taken to council as they are the only body that can issue a decision per West Richland Municipal Code fourteen oh one oh three oh A. The Planning Commission held a duly noticed public hearing on August seventeenth, twenty twenty-three and recommended a three-to-one council approve the proposed text amendment at their September fourteenth regular meeting. Public comments have been encouraged and received both verbally at the Planning Commission and city council hearings. Most of the comments have been in opposition and aligned with the demographic data collected in the survey. The proposed text amendment supports the the comprehensive plan, goals, and policies by supporting retail sales and diversity of businesses. It has been a difficult decision for council with much deliberation, and I hope that the council will take all the facts into consideration this evening as you move towards a decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Stephanie, I just want to make sure that Councilman Stoker's online. I don't see him on my screen. Is he still with us?
He is. He's moved down lower, and I don't believe it's visible on the other view.
See him drop off. Would you let me know so we can get him back on? I'll make sure that he's involved in this conversation as well.
Ah, well, as you say that, he did just drop off.
Okay, we're gonna wait just a second and let the council member to get back on here. Thank everybody for their patience. Modern technology at its finest, right? See him, yeah? Shooting in the text, John? We got multiple people on it.
Put on his phone, that phone too, I suppose, but then we'd have to keep the mic on the phone.
Jessica, can I ask you for any advice in regards to this? I know he's in an area where there may not be very favorable cell service.
Um, I have not researched this particular issue. I um, think we should probably make some efforts to to get ahold of him. But at some point, you know, we need to proceed with the meeting.
Picks up. Right to voicemail. Okay.
He's still there.
Yeah, he let us know that he's gonna be in the parking lot while his wife and his kids are in the restaurant eating, so hopefully they'll save him a goodie and bring it out to the car. Can you with us?
I'm here. I'm here.
Okay, don't move. Hold that phone right by the window. Alrighty, and uh I just got done, we just got done with the staff report, and I see Mayor Protem Brink's got his card up. Mayor Protem Brink?
Mr. Mayor, I kindly request the floor for just a minute or so, if I may.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
In serving this city for more than ten years on both the Planning Commission and the city council, the matter of permitting retail cannabis sales in our city is clearly one of the most divisive issues. Numerous citizens have passionately weighed in on this matter over the past several months, uh, either in favor or in opposition. And tonight, it's been placed before the seven of us to exercise our best judgment and experience in making a decision. However, I suspect that regardless of whether our vote is in favor or against, there will be many citizens who believe the wrong decision was made. As a government of the people, and especially that form of government which is closest to the people, I believe the wisest action for this council tonight is to place the matter of retail cannabis sales before the people in the form of an advisory vote. Let our citizens decide what is best for them so that we may abide by the will of the people and their decision. Therefore, I make the following motion. I move to postpone final action on ordinance twenty-six twenty-three until the first regular meeting of city council following certification of an advisory vote held for the residents' opinion on a proposal of whether to allow recreational cannabis retail sales within the city of West Richland or prohibit it. I'll go ahead and second that.
Um, let's just go ahead and open it up for conversation amongst council, and then we'll give citizens an opportunity to to weigh in on your said motion. Mayor Protem Brink, if that's all right.
That's fine, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Moran?
Thank you. Well, I had other things planned for tonight to say, but I think that for this, my initial reaction is that on one hand, I would actually prefer just to get it done because there has been so much time and effort spent on it. If this were something that would have been maybe a year ago or two or three years ago, I would be more in favor of it, although I on the other hand, I really would like to hear what a large number of people say, more than just what the survey had said. So I think that I'm curious as to what the cost of something like that might be. Um, if we might happen to know something, anything off the top of our head, I know that this is not something that was asked prior to today, so I understand if you don't have the amount.
I don't have an exact amount. I do know we did the library um, back in twenty sixteen, I believe, and that was about seventy to seventy-five thousand.
So would this be something similar in cost possibly?
It depends on when it would go. If it was a special election, it could be more. If you're going in a um, election where there's a bunch of items, like this year's the general election with presidential. So if you get it tied in with that, it could be cheaper.
Okay. I I would also have to caution because of wanting to be fiscally responsible as well. However, there is again, wanting to make certain that we have all of the voices of people heard that are able to vote, so I'm I think I would say that I'm torn on this one. Um, I would love to hear what others say.
Councilmember Bloom?
humorous that when we first started talking about this, that was exactly what I requested. And the the reality comes down to is, I I think I asked the clerk to share with you the National Institute of Health two thousand twenty-three study of all the reports on as a result of marijuana legalization. It it had findings of look mainly at four, five areas, but it came back with detrimental findings as far as um, increased use, cannabis-related healthcare visits, and impaired driving activities. For those reasons, it is not safe for our our community. It doesn't improve the safety of our community. It degrades the safety of our community. Uh, I would ask you if we had a survey and asked people if we would stop issuing traffic tickets, would we follow their advice? Um, I mean, that that would be a little sarcastic, but the truth comes down to it. Some people will say, I don't want to get a ticket. Don't give me a ticket. So I I'm more than happy to support putting this on the ballot like I suggested, what? Eight months ago? But I'm the old person on this council. Nothing, nothing personal of anyone else, but I I've been on the council. This is my fourteenth year of being on the council. So, um, I'm more than willing to see that. But from the the standpoint of the question of putting this on the ballot, I would think the consequence for a potential a hundred and sixty thousand dollar a year income. Uh, you know, the the discussions of police involvement, just simply the the heaven forbid one accident that would lose a life. And so, you know, it's, if we put another cannabis store, there'll be more cannabis use in the city. It it becomes convenient. I don't think we want to opt for convenience, so. Um, anyway, I I'm willing to go for a vote. Uh, or or the recommendation to put it on ballot.
Councilmember Fettow, yes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yeah, you know, this has been a a rough couple of months, um, and and that when when I heard Mayor Protem Brink say that, I immediately thought of you, Mr. Bloom, that you had said when we started this process about the vote. Um, at the end of the day, I think the survey stats are legit. However, I think hearing from three thousand, four thousand, five thousand citizens before we make decisions is the is the smart move. Um, comparing it to speeding, however, you know, I think that's a stretch, right? That's 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 illegal. But anyway, I I think, I think I'd like to hear um, what, you know, the citizens as a whole would like to say of this. Um, I I just think that's the right thing to do. Uh, and again, I wish we did this eight months ago, right?
Discretionary discretionary enforcement.
There you go. But, you know, I I wish we did this eight months ago. We would have the answer and be done with this by now instead of dragging everybody out here, but uh, at the end of the day, I think it is the best thing to do to to hear from the citizens.
Protem Brink?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, part of what Councilmember Bloom said many, many weeks or months ago with regard to an advisory vote, um, I thought considerably about that issue. And this is the most divisive issue that this city has faced. Uh, that's the bottom line. Um, I too believe that the overall validity of the survey is somewhat accurate. And for those that may remember, in twenty eighteen, uh, the police department did a survey on police services. A physical piece of paper was mailed out to everyone in their utility billing envelope. Uh, so that went to approximately forty-five hundred households at the time. Three hundred responses were received. This survey that was recently done garnered twice as many responses. And one can doubt perhaps the scope of the audience that responded to it. I get that, and I'm not gonna argue back and forth on that because we can all find information either to support or to refute our arguments. But I think in this case, because this issue is so critical and has brought out so much support and so much uh, uh, so much, so many voices against it that we should put this to a vote of the people. It will be an investment. The city will have to set aside some money. Um, based on my conversations with the Benton County Auditor, I think that the timing of it will allow for a lower expense than was cited by Ms. Gwynn, but that remains to be seen. But we have the opportunity for everyone to have an equal vote and an equal say in this very important matter. So that's why I made this motion, and I ask my fellow council members to carefully consider it and to uh, vote in favor of it as well.
Councilmember Smart?
Push the button. Sorry. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, council members for your comments. I appreciate those, and Mr. Brink for bringing this up. Um, so I as many of the audience members here today probably have a lot of things they were planning to say uh, for or against this issue. Um, just because it's brought up in the current conversation, I will cite that I was going to point out that the um, contrary to many uh, experts' opinion, the statistical survey taken is not valid. I can say that with absolute certainty. I can say that because if you calculate the plus or minus five percent margins, if you go minus percent, you end up with thirty-one percent strongly supporting, and if you go to uh, plus pi five percent margin, you end up with um, plus thirty-two percent opposed. The fact of the matter is that even those numbers are irrelevant because the statistical sampling was atypical. Uh, it was um, conducted pretty much online as our director indicated. We had, uh, first of all, ninety-two uh, respondents were thrown out because it was highly suspected that they were um, not valid uh, responses. Copies or duplicates, or who knows what that meant. Um, but seventy-eight percent were via email. And if you read uh, people that talk about statistical surveys, uh, that alone is enough to skew your results dramatically. Basically, only people who A, read their email, B, bother to log into the survey, uh, C, actually um, complete it. You know, this this cuts your population sampling by a significant amount. I mean, the fact that that supposedly we notified the entire community, three thousand some odd directly by email, I think is what I heard. Um, and only six hundred and sixty-two responded is is in itself a direct indication of atypical sampling, right? Uh, obviously, people, you you, we sampled in a way where the majority of our population uh, didn't respond. So, uh, this, this, these survey results, first of all, we're a constitutional republic. You elect representatives to represent you. This is not a democracy. It's not a democracy. We elect our representatives with a free democratic elections. Hopefully, they're valid, right? But then we are supposed to represent you throughout our terms until we're either booted out or someone else gets elected into position. So, so I'm okay with so I don't want to contradict myself here, but I'm okay with having a a vote of the people because I think it's interesting. Um, I'm pretty confident that we will see a a starkly different response than what we saw in the survey. Um, I'm willing to accept if we don't. However, I still, as a representative of my constituents, and I'll say this plainly, which I've heard from none of the rest of my council members, you will not get me to vote for a pot shop in this community or to expand our ordinance to allow it to happen. Uh, I look at people individually, and if just one person, but one child is the victim of of eating an edible that was bought from that pot shop and is goes to the hospital, or if one individual becomes addicted, or if one individual fails their college coursework because they can't avoid the ready access to marijuana, which our state and uh, other existential threats, I will say, have allowed us to engage in. Um, that's, that's too much for me. So I will only speak for myself on strict advisement from everyone involved, uh, but there's, there's no way that this is a good idea to have a pot shop. So, you know, if if we have an election or if it becomes an item, it will only be an advisory vote. Uh, if ninety percent of our 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 citizens say, yeah, we want a pot shop, I'm sorry, I'm not voting for it. Just letting you know. And I'd be, I'd be happy to hear uh, all of our, all of our community members, including our council, you know, express their opinions on this throughout the period of time between now and the time we decide, whenever that decision happens, whether it's tonight or uh, nine months from now. Um, but but those are my reasons, and I could go on and on. There are so many good letters written to the council about uh, you know, reasons not to have marijuana readily available in your community. Um, I will state, I'm actually happy to have seen after all of these months, we actually got like two or three letters in in support of a marijuana shop. This tells me people are at least, we're getting the message out. So it's a very small minority, but it's, I'm glad to hear it. I'm glad to hear people. Now, I will say, I think it's important to note that the reasons cited for wanting a marijuana shop in West Richland was to garner overwhelmingly, the reason was to garner the tax income. And and as our own department head has estimated, you know, a hundred and twenty to a hundred and sixty K a year. This community operates on I don't know, what is, what's the latest budget? Uh, you know, twenty, forty million dollars a year, something like that. Uh, it's a lot of money. A hundred and twenty thousand bucks is a drop in the bucket. Um, and that, by the way, does not include the expenditure, the costs that it'll cost this community to have that many more people or even the ones that are currently hooked on marijuana, you know, having ready access to additional sources. Um, you know, how many, how many accidents will it take? How many police calls will it take? How many um, citizens who have diminished uh, motivation, which which I have personally seen? You know, people that enjoy marijuana on a weekend or something. They just seem to be demotivated. I mean, I've talked to employers, farmers in the local area. And a lot of their employees, you know, in recent years since it's been legalized. Have 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 taken up marijuana, and they just the report is. It just turns people into unmotivated. Underachievers. And so that cost, that's a real life cost. Do you want to talk about? Uh, monetary benefits? Let's try to keep our people educated. On the ball, sharp. Working hard, being productive. Uh, and and enjoying life to its maximum extent possible. Without getting high on on the weekends or heaven forbid after work every day. So. I could go on and on. I can see by the looks of my fellow council members, it's time for me to to move on, and I appreciate that, guys. But 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 this is a. This survey result, I would encourage people to look. Contrary to what I've been accused of. Looking at the statistical analysis and understanding what it actually means. We heard from an expert, we heard from the person that that conducted the survey. But they failed to mention. The atypical. Uh, sampling that happened. And that's probably just to save their own hide, I'm sorry to say, but. You know, if I got paid thousands of dollars to conduct a survey. I probably wouldn't be pointing out its flaws either. So that's that's what I would encourage all the citizens to do. If we go for a vote on this in nine months or so. Continue to educate yourselves on these things. Continue to educate the public. That's your neighbors, your friends. And and make this a. Hopefully, a fine, make this such a pronounced. And definite decision. That that future applicants. Will have no desire to try to spend even the mere fifteen hundred bucks or whatever it costs to to do an ordinance application. Five hundred. Seven hundred, okay, seven hundred dollars to put to put all of us through this. Let's just make it really clear that they're not going to succeed, so. And and then I'll make one last mention while I've got the floor is that I I am. Determined and counsel, I'm talking to you now. I would really like to see us do a workshop. And brainstorm on how not to have to go through this again, really for this, well, for this topic specifically because it's come up so many times. So I guess I'll leave it there. So I'll end with putting a bow on it and saying that I will support. And like a a a vote of the people. But I would also last comment is I would ask what the legal ramifications are. To us not deciding on this because there's been an official request to change the ordinance. By a community member or citizen who's paid that fee. Do we have to? What are the legal ramifications of deciding or not deciding that or delaying a vote? Until after we get a a a. An advisory vote from the people. What are the details there?
There's no logistics in regards to that. This is an item that's been asked of an individual, and this is a process that we're going through, and whether the council decides is what the council decides had.
So the timeframe is flexible. Awesome, thank you.
And I see Councilmember Stoker, you've still got your phone in the right spot. Your hand is up. You have the floor, sir. I can't hear you.
I just want to say.
You're a little you're a little broke up there. Try again.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Okay, let's go with that. Yes, sir.
When I ran for the first time. I ran because of this topic. I ran because of. In the end, four council, or not four, three council members. Who voted against the moratorium on. The pot stores. So I do have best interest in this vote. Because it's what in the end really got me involved. So I'm going to side with Councilmember Smart. And that I'm a no regardless. Of where things come up. I mean, to me, I've thought. If ninety percent of the people in our community vote to have anyone over. Half a million dollar home have their property confiscated, I'm not voting for that either. And and to me, this is a along the same. Order of significance. When it comes to. Uh, I've been keeping track of individuals. Distinct individuals who have spoken at. Council meetings, planning commissions, who submitted emails. There were. Seventy individuals who spoke against. And newest email that came in just today in my inbox. There was a fifth person now who has been four. So to me, if you add in those names and numbers to the. Survey. In the end, it comes out to forty four percent for and forty four forty percent against. Still no majority. And certainly not the spread that it was before. It's much closer. So I'm a no. But, you know, it would be interesting to hear what people have to say. And still, you know, it is a good big deal of money, but if I guess we wait till a primary or. A general election, that would defer a good bit of cost, but. I'm not against hearing what people have to say, but I am a no. And thank you for this time.
Thank you, councilmember. And Mayor Pro Tim Brink, your card's up again, sir.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just wanted to. Follow up on Councilmember Smart's comment. Trying to keep this matter from coming up again and again. That's one of my goals behind this vote is to put this matter to bed. Let the citizens decide. Now, let's. Let's get it over with. That's it.
No other cards up. Uh, I will give the audience an opportunity to weigh in on council or Mayor Pro Tim Brink's. Uh, motion to put this out to an advisory vote of the citizens. So if you'd like to make a comment in regards to the motion on the floor. You have a motion in a second. Uh, I will allow you to go ahead and come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Please limit your comments to three minutes. And maybe share a little bit of what your input would be as. Far as letting the entire public decide. Anyone?
Dan Ritchie, five oh eight Austin Drive, and I'll just go ahead and be the first one up here. And I will echo the comments of Councilman Smart. It doesn't matter. You can offer me, you can offer me, you know, hundred and sixty thousand dollars. It doesn't matter. We've told, we've had other people come up here and say you can tax me other ways. But not this. It doesn't matter. So the point being, there are other ways to accomplish what I think we're trying to do here, which is to help our our coffers. And and to help our budgets, and I get that, all right? But it doesn't matter. Okay, so let's find other ways to accomplish this, and let's certainly not use this survey. In any way, shape or form. And and hopefully, with with Councilman Brink's. Proposal here, all right, that will put this to bed. This this survey is flawed, flawed and flawed again. Right? And so we can't, we can't hang our hat on this in any way, shape or form. So. I guess what I'm saying is that I support what you're proposing. But the bottom line is, no, it doesn't matter. Hundred and sixty thousand is not worth it. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Robert Palmer. I live at thirty six hundred South Highlands Boulevard. Um, first of all, I'd like to ask for accommodation. Um, I'm a cancer patient survivor. I have difficulty speaking, especially when I have to speak up. I've been trying my best here to get everything in in three minutes, and I'm going to try to do that tonight, but. The condition I have with my throat makes that difficult, and I like to be able to speak clearly and slowly. And not lose my voice. So with that being said, I'll try to be brief. As you know. I and many of the others in attendance tonight have been at all of the meetings over the last few months, imploring you to vote no on this issue. Uh, we've heard many very good arguments supporting our position. Multiple, multiple people now have to live adjacent to Nirvana store. Have noted the negative impacts to their homes. I've recently received public records data. From both nine one one and the and Benton County Sheriffs. Regarding calls for service to the Nirvana address. In a four-year period, two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and eighteen. Before Nirvana was there, there was a total of five calls. Over four years, five calls. For that service address. In two thousand and nineteen, when Nirvana opened, those calls increased to twenty five. In two thousand and twenty one, there was thirty five. In two thousand and twenty two, there was forty two. It's gone up. And in two thousand and twenty three through November seventeenth, there's been twenty, there was twenty five. So despite Mr. Mendenhall's attempt to downplay the crime issue here. By only showing us a snippet of information. The fact is that when you look at the complete record, crime has increased dramatically since that store went in. And that's been a concern here with people. It was also recently brought to my attention that the ordinance was changed. As far back as November seventh. Council meeting to allow up to three pot shops. While all along, the council and staff has been telling us it was for one. Now, however, there appears to have been an eleventh hour change. Made to the ordinance to make it one. So whether you approve one, two, or twenty, it really doesn't matter. I think because once you open that gate. There will be more following. You you're not going to stop other people from wanting the same thing. While staff keeps trying to focus attention on the zoning area out on off of two twenty four. The reality, reality is that it would also be allowed in our neighborhoods off Kennedy. While there are existing businesses there now. In time, those properties could be sold, and we would have the exact same thing that happened where Nirvana is at now. You're going to have pot shops coming into that light industrial zone that's right in the middle of a residential neighborhood. Finally, I'd just like to urge you to listen to the many people who have been here, taking our time to be here and participate in the process. Honor the community's vision of being a safe, family-friendly city and vote no. I was hoping to tell you that you're going to vote on this ordinance tonight and vote no. And after that, I was going to suggest that if you can't do that. Let's put it to a citizen's vote. I would like if you if you do it as an advisory vote, though. I would hope you take. The advice of that vote and and that is the heaviest weight of your decision. Because it's still just an advisory vote, you could still vote yes. Regardless of what, if ninety percent of the people say yes, you could you could vote yes. I should know, or I mean, if ninety percent say no, you could vote yes, just like the other one.
Another three minutes at the end of the meeting, so you can get a full six in if you want.
Thank you. I I'm all good. Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Anyone else?
Very smart, four hundred and South Forty Fourth Avenue, Switzerland. Basically, what Mr. Smart is saying too, but I wrote something down here. So it seems that the idea of having a pot shop has made its way to the city council. Which despite strong community's input against the detrimental decision at the planning committee a few months back. It has continued to be considered. It doesn't appear that the city council and planning commission are hearing the concerned citizens. I stand with all those against, all those who voice against this decision. I don't care whatever money the town may get from it, it would not be honorable benefit. We do not want the increased crime, mental health issues, or the negative impacts. Anyone at any age would. Get from smoking marijuana marijuana. West Switzerland is a place where people come to get away from the bigger town life, not a place to party and deal drugs. The locations to even place a shop, given the mapping areas, are well within reach to the community, specifically teens. Why would you promote mental health issues with marijuana? And then try to fix them, which they're not always fixable. Please look at your family and ask yourself what type of life and community you want your kids to live in. Please make the correct ethical and moral choice. I would be okay with the advisory ballot, but I just don't understand why it's need if it's a right and wrong versus right and wrong matter. So, thank you.
Danae Jepson, forty five oh four Desert Cove Court. I am the president of a local nonprofit. And. It has been my experience that. My number one responsibility. Is to defend the mission and the vision of that organization. And I read your mission and your vision, and a pot shop does not fit into any of that. And so it just floors me that we're having this discussion over and over again. I urge each of you. I know it's hard, but to. Have a backbone and. Defend this city for what you say it is. We moved here. We brought our family here. We pay more for a building permit here than any other city. It's more expensive to live here, but we come here because of what West Richland claims it to be, a family-friendly place. If people want a pot shop, they can live somewhere else. We don't want it here. We we believe in you. I appreciate what you do. And I beg you to be who you claim you are, not to be hypocritical. Truly, stand behind your mission and your vision. And you will attract good, healthy. Prominent businesses that will make the city grow and flourish. Four pot shops in a city? Can you imagine what that would do to a city? How detrimental it would be? This place would be garbage. So, in my mind, the discussion should have been over. Many meetings ago, if you are who you say you are, and I urge you to stand up. And be strong. And do that. And let us cheer you on. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Jennifer Page. My address is four six one four Snowy Al Court. Here in West Richland. I'd like to speak to you about the survey, the survey. We hear that it was. That there was a link emailed out to those with emails on file with the city for utility bills. I was one of the very first people. Who signed up for online bill paying. Thanks to Joe Potts, the former finance director. Joe reached out to me and he said, hey, we're trying this new system. You want to be a guinea pig? Sure, Joe, I'll give it a try. When was that? Twelve, fifteen years ago? It was a long time ago. My email has not changed since then. I am pretty technologically savvy. I check my email way too often every day. I read through my spam folder before I delete them. I never got notified of that survey by by email. Something from the city would have stuck out like a sore thumb in my folder. Whether it be the spam folder or my inbox. Didn't get that. I learned about that survey. I hate to say it, on social media. Now, what would have happened if Mark Zuckerberg had decided that my algorithm shouldn't have shown me the West Richland Citizens? Group post on that day that somebody remarked about it in that group. Yeah, wouldn't have seen it. Fortunately, I did see it. I did fill it out. I think back to the, I remember the police survey. I believe it was Mr. Smart who mentioned that. That came in the utility bill. I was one of the three hundred that returned it. Why? Because the city asked for my input. As a concerned citizen who's lived in this town for almost three decades now. I gave you my two cents. My point is, is that this digital survey. Isn't worth what you paid for it. I don't know what that was. But it wasn't worth what you paid for it. I don't think it was an inaccurate represent representation of our community. And I don't think how it was distributed. Was fair and equitable. And the right way to distribute it. I don't think it should be considered. The results from that should not be considered in this discussion.
My name is Kelly Smart. I live in four hundred and South Forty Fourth Avenue. I want to, four hundred and South Forty Fourth Avenue. I want to remind you that West Richland is primarily home to families with young children and teenagers. I want to ask the council a couple of questions. I know you cannot answer, but I urge you to think hard on what I'm about to say. According to the National Institute of Drug Abuse, marijuana users have reported. That using marijuana brings lower life satisfaction, poorer mental health, poorer physical health, more relationship problems, less academic and career success. High likelihood of dropping out of high school, more job absences, accidents and injuries. Now I ask you, councilmembers, is that how you want your neighbors and their children's life outcomes to be described? Do you want your children to have lower life satisfaction, poorer mental health and poorer physical health? Do you want your kids to drop out of school? Do you want your kids to drop out of school to never experience academic or career success? Do you want, do you think that not even one pot shop customer's purchase could lead to such a sad outcome? Do you think that West Richland is somehow immune? Because if you don't want your, that outcome for your children, why would you vote to increase the chances of those outcomes on their children and families of your community? Allowing a pot shop within city limits of West Richland will, and I have no doubt, either in the near future or maybe years from now, cause community members or loved ones to fall prey to the seductive and harmful poison made even more available by the proposed action tonight or in the future. And the pot shop won't just stand idle. People will be sucked into its grasp. Whether they think it's bad for them or not, we know the effects and outcomes. So I urge you, council, to what, to ask why you think it's okay to elevate this plague of drugs into our safe community. If you don't want your community's children to be exposed to and potentially addicted to marijuana, you must not succumb to greedy pressures and instead vote against the forces that would create a drug-filled society. No one in West Richland wants to live like Seattle, Portland, or other big cities where drug dealing, drug abuse, and drug usage is prevalent. Residents did not choose West Richland to be, to be around those who have messed up by smoking pot. They chose West Richland because it doesn't have those issues. It has family-focused events, safe streets, and a growing prosperous community, filled with people who don't smoke marijuana and have a career and academic success. But I am certain that no West Richlander would choose monetary benefits at the expense of their children's or loved ones' well-being. We don't want that kind of money, money that is gained at the expense of lives and the well-being of our community. I find it interesting that you would consider bringing in a pot shop that will only intensify community mental health issues while simultaneously contemplating the expenditure of millions of dollars on a new mental health facility that will, that with hundreds of beds. According to the National Institute of Drug Abuse, depression, anxiety, suicidal thoughts, and other mental health issues are directly correlated with marijuana use. What kind of destructive merry-go-round are we contemplating here? Fueling the fire so that there is even more need for the mental health facility? Seems a little contradictory to me. Thank you.
My name is Dr. Kevin Marsh. I actually live in Richland, but I am a pediatric specialist here in town. And I care for the children and grandchildren of people in West Richland, and perhaps maybe some of your children and grandchildren. So I thought it would be useful for you to at least hear from a medical perspective locally on the front lines on this issue. I am a pediatric hospitalist, so I only deal with children who are being hospitalized or in emergency situations. And I'm credentialed at three different hospitals throughout the Akama Basin. So I have a fairly wide scope of practice. I can tell you that initially, when I was in medical school, 22 years ago, that the issue of medical marijuana came up in various states, including California. And after the medical marijuana was approved, the amount of teenage use skyrocketed. So it was making its way into the hands of youth, even though that was illegal to do. In this state, once it became legalized, the amount of newborns that we saw affected, children that we've seen affected, has also gone up. I don't have exact numbers for you, but I can tell you that there is not a day that goes by in those three hospitals I work at where there is not a drug-affected infant who was born. Most of those infants will have some exposure to marijuana as kind of the beginnings of a drug abuse problem. The other issue that came up was that once marijuana was legalized, that we began to see fentanyl mixed in with the illicit marijuana that people buy on the street corner. And I don't even want to get into what fentanyl has done to certain families in this community. It's absolutely destructive. So the issue of having marijuana getting into the hands of children is very, very scary. And if you've never seen a child with an acute intoxication of cannabis, it's frightening. You'll never forget it. They can be absolutely unconscious, they can stop breathing, and yes, they can be deadly. And I have seen that here in our community from legal cannabis. Other issues that come up, here across the street from Libby Middle School. When a baby is exposed to cannabis, especially during gestation and within two years after they're born, we aren't sure of the effects. What we know is that cannabis, or at least some of the chemicals in cannabis, are fat soluble. And there's a fat layer that's formed around the brain and the nerves in the first couple of years. And if those chemicals get in there, that can adversely affect learning. We do know for sure that there's a link between learning disorders and cannabis use in the household. We're not sure which is chicken, which is egg, but there is a link there. So for the future generations that we will probably not know the effect on their learning for 15 or 20 years, I think it's questionable to increase the amount of legal marijuana. So I appreciate your time on this issue.
Kevin Shoemaker, 1708 Elmwood Avenue. I had not prepared any statements because I didn't think there was anything else to talk about, but apparently I'm wrong again. I'm, I'm thinking about this, and I'll just let you know where I stand. I'm against an advisory vote. I would, I would venture to say that this city council right now is more knowledgeable about the issue of marijuana than 95% of the voters in West Richland. I can't see how an advisory vote is going to give you any additional information except for where the people feel at the moment. And so I'm confused because this has been a long process. And I would give you, if at the multiple city planning commission or city planning meetings, which I attended most, not all of, if I had this kind of a crowd in support of a pot shop, and at the city council meetings that I have attended, I had this kind of a crowd in support of the pot shop, I would say, that's the will of the people. And I would respect the idea that the city council says, wow, you know, maybe I was wrong on this issue. This is what the people really want. But people consistently, new faces and familiar faces have come out repeatedly to tell you how they feel. It's easy to click on things on a survey and say, yeah, no, I like this, I don't like that. But I want you to consider for a second, the hours, at the last meeting, what was it, three-hour meeting? People taking time out of their lives because they believe in this so much, that has to have a greater weight than an online survey. And so I'm a little bit, I understand you're in a difficult position, but there's a part of me that thinks deep down inside, an advisory, advisory vote is not going to change your belief. So I'm not quite sure, I'm confused why, why we're going this route. I do understand that if we, if this would have happened months and months ago, it would have made sense to get a true feel for the people. But at this point, I, I just can't imagine a situation where you don't have a pulse or a finger on the pulse of the people at this point in the process. So I'm just talking for me. I've heard a lot of people say, yeah, advisory vote. I'm personally opposed of it. I'm tired of this issue in the city of West Richland because for me, I think it's, it's been clearly stated where most of the people in the city of West Richland stand on this issue. Thank you for your time.
Sorry. My name, yeah, my name's David Cole. I live at 1710 Elmwood Avenue, and that hurt. I just want to echo what the previous gentleman said. It, it seems pretty clear that where the citizens of this town, you know, what our thoughts are. People have made them known. I think we've been vocal, but we've been respectful. We've made, made, made our, you know, made our case with council. As far as the numbers, I, I would just say this. You guys know I recently ran for office on this council. I knocked on about 3,000 doors in this town, and I kept the walking list. I thought there were 16 people that had said yes. I went back and looked at them, but the number is 14. So I don't know what those numbers actually translate to as far as statistics and analysis and validity. I just know that out of 3,000 doors, 14 people said, bring it on. The rest of us said no. I would, I would hope that there's, there's some value in those numbers. Thank you.
Sorry. You gotta sit up front, I guess. Craig Nelson, 2318 South Highlands Boulevard. I, I would concur with the two previous gentlemen that an advisory boat, vote is, we're wasting our time and kicking the can down the road. It, it's not a democracy, as you said. You are representing, make a decision and do it. You've got enough data already. I would go back to the 2012 state election. I've pulled up here that Benton County in this voted 56.5% voted no, 43.5% voted yes. Why do we need to spend our money on another, what do the people say? I would ask, can we even drill down more and go to those results and say, what did West Richland vote? I don't know if that's possible as opposed to go into another spending more money and doing a, an advisory vote. But nonetheless, I think we've spoken as the people. The democratic process allows those in favor to come stand here, just like I do. And I've been here for a few meetings and haven't heard one. Yay. They've all been nay. So, once again, I would say, just vote on it tonight. Put it to bed, be done with it, and figure out a way that it never comes up again. Thank you.
Terry Davies, 3706 South Lake Drive. And I, thank you, I sent a letter in. Appreciate the opportunity to do that. And I had something I was going to say earlier, and that has been a shift from Mayor Protem with his motion for that as well. I'm similarly, similarly torn that I've heard what Kate said, Councilmember Moran, about, you know, just the debate about an advisory vote. I love the idea of a vote. I think that that's a fair way to do it, to hear from more people. On the other hand, I do see that this has taken quite a bit of time, and perhaps minds have already been made up. I don't know what a vote would do in terms of moving that otherwise. But I like the idea of a vote, so I'm, I'm in that dilemma as well. But the, what I wanted to say is, we, we talk about dilemmas. There's the dilemma of the issue around cannabis retail sales, the detrimental effects, the, whatever effects of marijuana use as a council, and, and the city also has the challenge of raising money. And that's very difficult. I'm so in favor of law enforcement. I come from a law enforcement family. And I also see the intense pressure that the state and, and people who want to open these businesses in the community and the, the many different layers of who can apply for a permit or a license. That honestly, I was a little confused because I did see in the packet that there was three, up to three shops that were proposed in the text amendment. And then today, that was modified, and it said one in 3A of that. And so that confused me because I know that if one is allowed, if there's a social equity license, licensee who comes in, that would we be obligated to permit that as well? So I kind of see pot shops as like Lay's Potato Chips. You can't just open one, just like you can't just eat one. Thank you.
My name is Robin Brown, and I live at 3821 Mountain Meadow Court. And I just live a stone's throw from the current pot shop that the county allowed after several meetings of people telling them they were not in favor of it. And, you know, we voted for the police safety, whatever they want to call that, last vote. We just had to give that three, three tenths of a percent, was it? Tax, sales tax revenue for the police and safety that we're gonna help with mental health and all these other things with that. That the citizens will vote for things that we do need. And none of us here, that I have heard yet, in all these meetings, the only person you heard from was the man from Yakima who wants to open one. And, you know, he isn't gonna live here. We're gonna live here. And I also believe in the vision and the mission. I've lived in this town for 25-plus years. And that's what my husband and I enjoy, those mission and vision of this community, that it's not just, you know, it's, it's a well-planned community. And we do not, I really do not want to see another pot shop because the activity by my house, and I live on a cul-de-sac, so you know, I don't get through traffic, but it is all around us. And it's, you know, we've had two or three really bad accidents right by us. One, just right at the intersection of Arena Road and Kennedy Road, where a bicyclist ended up being hit, and I don't know what happened to her. She was seriously injured. And we've had several accidents at the intersection of Kennedy and Keene, which I'm sure not all of them are due to, you know, DUI or anything, but it just adds to that. When you have people coming and going, they're doing their little activities in the parking lot. They're not supposed to, but they do. And it just adds to the traffic not being any safer. And the more you do of that, the more there is. So please do not put a pot shop in town. Thank you.
My name is Mary Cole. I'm very nervous, sorry. I live at 1710 Elmwood Avenue. I was born and raised in this, in the tri-cities. Lived in West Richland for the last 16 years, 17 years. I was excited to move here because it was a small town. It wasn't Richland where I grew up. Up until three years ago, I didn't get involved in politics. I've always voted. I take that very, very seriously. I'm a patriot. I believe in the Constitution. But until three years ago, I didn't really get involved. And I have to be honest with you, there's times now I wish I still hadn't gotten involved, and I wish my head was still in the sand. Because each of you were elected by us. And I have been, this is my third meeting, and this room is full. And every single person that has spoken has spoken against pot shops in West Richland. Every one of you have heard that repeatedly. And that's not even including the people who've emailed. I'm just talking about people who've shown up. But as elected officials, you have a responsibility to me and to these people and everybody else who voted for you, to represent us. Not your own opinions, your own desires, and not the bottom line. This is our town. Long after you're off council, I'm still gonna live here. My children, my grandchildren live here, and my great-grandchild is due this month. And I'm embarrassed. The reason we had a 30% turnout for this last election is because people don't trust politicians, and they don't trust elections. We expect our council to be people we can believe in and we can trust, to represent us. When we start seeing that, and we have surveys that count, that matter, that are credible, and I'm not a John Smart, but I knew it was Hooey. When I feel like people start listening to us as voters, other voters will feel the same, and you're gonna see people showing up and voting again. I'm disgusted, frankly, and I don't mean no disrespect, but I really hope for better out of my West Richland, West Richland City Council, that you would listen to the people who've spoken. Thank you.
Pat Thompson, 610 South 54th Street. I'm gonna give you a little bit of my history. When I got married to my husband, he was in the Navy. We, he served for 26 years. We moved a lot. Now, I told this when we did the moratorium on the last pot shop. We lived in San Diego in 1968. I loved that place so much, I wanted to live there. We went back several times for our duty station. And in 1982, when I had four children, I had to walk my kids to school and make sure they got there safe because there is a candy shop right there, and the guy was selling them candy and getting them hooked. I go back there now, probably about three years ago. I would not live there. My friends have moved. They're having thefts, they're having drugs, they're having cartel. I can see that coming to this city. I'm almost three quarters of a century old. I'm not saying I'm lucky to be alive. And I don't want that for my grandkids, one of them sitting here. I don't want it for my son that's sitting here, who lives by the pot shop on the cul-de-sac that Robin lives on. Because we've had theft, we've had these swarming the yard. We've had things that we never saw and the valuation of our properties have gone down. We don't want this. We want what's good for our kids. We want what's best for our community. I love this place. We've lived here since nineteen eighty nine in the tri cities. And I have seen it go downhill. I'll give you an example. Somebody I know was gonna hire a retired person back for consultation, consulting. They were excited to get him because he had all this knowledge. They had to deny his badge because he had done marijuana. He was older, should have known better. It's not far from our schools. Are we gonna have to walk our kids to school to get them past the candy shop? I hope not, please. And if you do put it to vote, make it understandable. Don't give it all that jumble. Say, do you want pot in your community or not? Don't say da, 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 all that lingo, so I can understand that, thanks.
Amen.
Hello, my name is Nino Caputula. It's, my address sixty seven eighty three Caspian Place. Well, first, I would love to applaud Mr. John Smart for finally stating the obvious. This is a constitutional republic and I, I, this is the first time that actually hearing in the public setting that a voted official states the fact. But moving on from that, my husband and my, and myself, we're local business owners. And many of our friends and family are business owners, going anywhere from real estate business all the way to logistics company. And it's been very difficult to hire. And it's not only very difficult, even emotionally, to see these young people that cannot pass their drug tests and they cannot be employed. And this is something that no one talks about, that hey, you know, yeah, sure, it's legal for you to go and buy the substance and use occasionally, but you're not gonna be able to get hired in certain places. No one addresses that. And by the time these kids figure it out, guess what? They're on the hook. And then I have every, twice a day, I have to drive by that pot shop that is in county. And my, I have to answer a bunch of questions to my thirteen year old son and have to prove to him, just because something is legal, it doesn't make it right. So just as everyone said today, I think that you have enough information to actually make a decision today without having any more votes. And with the previous vote that just happened in November, we just can see the apathy, unfortunately, that people are in the state of apathy. So I think it'd just be with the waste of time and the waste of money. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Cindy Rens, I live at forty one hundred South Lake Court. I don't want to reiterate what everyone said here tonight because I agree with everything that everyone has said here this evening. I particularly felt it in my soul when Dr. Marsh was talking about the children that he treats here in our community. And I think that's something's been lacking in information provided due to you. So I hope that you really listen to that and take that seriously. But what I want to go into, and I sent you a letter today and I'm sure you all got it. And I apologize if there's any tech, uh, typos, I was in the hospital today with my mother-in-law, so I was just going really fast and that's no excuse, but I do apologize. I heard the council member talk about how many responses he got. And he, and I thought I heard him say there were seventy responses that he either heard by email or read by email or received here at the council, and five that were for. Of those five, two were at the planning commission where they were either the applicant or potential new applicant. So that leaves three. And I believe what I heard him say was of those five, particularly the last three, was they were for this amendment because it would bring in revenue. And I believe that's what I heard, okay. So really, the issue before you seems to be not whether marijuana is good for the community or not, or whether it follows our vision or our mission, which I think has been established it doesn't. It's really, are you going to vote yes on something because people think that it's about revenue for, I believe, parks and police, which there's been no plan that I've seen what you're gonna use that money for? Or if you solve that problem, do you really need to say yes to that? If you solve that revenue issue, if there is one, then, then their argument is invalid because they have access. This is not an issue of, of people not having access to marijuana in your community, in our community. They do. Just happens to be over the county line, but they do have access. So it's not an access issue, but it is really coming down to, it's money. And those people, according to your council member, said it was because they voted, they wanted you to vote yes because of the revenue. So I'd really like you to consider, is that revenue issue fixable without this revenue from this marijuana sales? I believe it is. I believe it can be fixed. We have to look harder. But I would like to see proposal of what you're gonna use that money for. Because you can't really fix a problem unless you know what it is. So I encourage you to vote no. In my experience in local government, putting it to a vote, and I'll be done in just a second, is kicking it down the road. I advised my council never to do that when I was a city manager because they had the facts before them. It was a difficult decision though, and I felt sorry for them. I understand that. But you do have the tools in front of you to make a decision this evening, and I encourage you to do so. Thank you.
Cody Lewis, five eight zero three Glenbrook Loop. So the last time I spoke here, I said I would be willing to support you guys putting this out to a vote. And after I listened to the doctor speak and this gentleman here, they changed my mind. I'm actually, I think you guys are more educated now than, 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 than all the people that would be voting for it. And most of the, the, the reasoning for the vote would be financial. So I would like to see you withdraw your amendment and, or your, whatever it is, and put it out, just, let's just kill this thing tonight. Thanks.
Evening. Ready for a break yet? My name's Ron Kilmer. I live at five twenty two Thebes Street. One of the things I haven't heard really addressed this evening is property values. Pot shops do not raise property values around them. People don't want to live next to them for obvious reasons. I'm willing to bet that each and every one of you sitting here tonight, if somebody said, hey, I'm gonna build a pot shop right next to your house, you wouldn't like it. Now, there's probably no chance that's coming to my house. I'm pretty sure of it. But doesn't matter. I still want, would respectfully request that you vote this evening, vote no. There's not one person I've heard tonight standing up in favor of bringing pot shops to West Richland. The one we have is more than plenty to service the needs of the residents of West Richland. Thank you very much. Have a pleasant evening.
I'm Ken Weaver. I'm the K and K and B Weaver LLC, applied for the amendment. I guess there is one voice. I appreciate everyone, I mean, I, I really appreciate where everyone's coming from. Marijuana, I, I think is dangerous in the young, in the young brains. I think it's terrible in kids, teens. If, if outlawing legal sales could somehow prevent that, I'd be all for it. But the idea that you don't have marijuana readily available on every street corner in this city, I think is incorrect. But if you Google Maps, six minutes from here is the largest pot shop in the state of Washington. And I haven't checked, but it's probably the largest pot shop in the region. I didn't see anyone with statistics that's saying that babies are getting fentanyl laced marijuana from legal pot. In fact, we throw people out of our shops that are underage. By voting against legal taxable sales, you're voting in favor of maintaining those people's market share that do sell their Mexican dirt weed, that do target your children. And we don't, we not only don't target children, we throw them out. And, and the idea that a no vote against taxable legal sales will limit availability is just, is incorrect. I, I bring two fifteen year old kids in here, give each of them fifty bucks, send them out, one to buy marijuana, one to buy alcohol, see who's back first. The guy eating marijuana probably one or two phone calls, he'll have it. The kid getting alcohol has to find a, an adult willing to break the law and buy alcohol for him. But if you think it's not available, two kids, fifty bucks each. Thank you.
Kristen Christensen, six zero zero one Kilaway Drive. I did get the survey in my email and I actually ignored it, really meant to come back to it, but I didn't get it the first time. And then I got like a reminder email that it was still available and I did fill it out. And in the email, it didn't really specify what was in it. It just said, take this survey for the city. So it wasn't until I opened it and actually started filling it out that I was like, oh my goodness, they're asking about like a pot shop in here, which was kind of surprising to me. I just didn't think that that kind of material was gonna be in the survey on the city. I thought it might be asking more about like parks and recreation and community functions or something. So I feel like even that was kind of misleading because if people just opened the email, you know, and just see like, fill out the survey, you know, if they knew that like possibly a pot shop was gonna be in there, I think more people would have been inclined to participate in the survey. But I, I agree with what everybody else has been saying as far as the survey. I feel like we need to just kick that survey out because we don't know how many times it was filled out and by who, if it was even people within our community. And if you're taking percentages, right, that was only four percent of our entire city population. And then something that keeps being brought up is that this issue is divisive. Although the last three meetings, all the people who have spoken have spoken against the pot shop. Not a single person in the last three meetings, and including tonight, that would be four meetings, has spoken for it. I, I don't see where the division is. We all seem to be on the same page. And, and even with, with the planning commission, I mean, the majority of the people that spoke were against it. So really, I mean, I feel like our community, we're on the same page here. And again, if there were people passionately in favor of the pot shop, where are they? I want them to be here, I want them to speak, I want them to talk and speak for it. But your citizens are here right in front of you and we're speaking to you and telling you that we don't want it. So I'm like, disregard the survey, who knows, who knows who filled that out? We are here right in front of you telling you that we don't want these pot shops in our city. And I say, let's stop postponing this vote and wasting more time and money. And please just vote and let's get it done and vote no on this amendment, please. Thank you.
Rob Anderson, two zero one four Hawk Court. I wasn't gonna stand up, but I, I agree with Mr. Weaver in the sense that pot is here and it's here to stay. What I disagree with though is that if you vote for the pot shops here, this city becomes known by the pot shops. You're gonna economically cause problems in this city because people are not gonna be coming. You're not gonna have the businesses like you want. I really think that economically, it's a deterrent. It should be a deterrent for this city economically. That hundred sixty thousand dollars isn't going to provide you a lot. And so I recognize pots here. I recognize we have to deal with that. It's not going away in this state. But I encourage you to vote no, just economically for the city.
Hi, Aaron Parker, fifty three oh one Blue J Lane. I was the tamale guy from last meeting. I want to thank you for the motion. I, I view it as a step in a positive direction in understanding, you know, your constituency. That it has been very clear for months now how the people feel about it. And I kind of view the, the motion as a, a step to shuck your tamales, so to speak, right? But I agree with many of the comments that have been said so far. I think a true understanding of the people right now would be to unanimously vote no on this. I don't think there's any question in anybody's minds how we feel about it. I think there is substantial questions about this, the survey, but for months now, you've had dozens and dozens of people, every meeting, even when it wasn't on the agenda, bringing it up and telling you how we feel. I don't know if there does need to be a, an advisory vote. I think there's confidence in how that would come out. If you vote no tonight, it would put it to bed, we'd be done with it. And I think your constituency would be happy with you. Thank you.
My name is Lanay Smart, four hundred South Fifty Fourth, West Richland. And I heard that Ken Weaver's statement about, you know, he doesn't like the pot, the effects of pot shop, pot with young people. And, and, but in that, yes, people do have access to pot, which down the street on Arena, on Arena Road, but that doesn't mean that we also have to open our doors to the same, same thing, just because he, just because there's one already here, there is pot here, but we can stand up and have a backbone and say no to pot. And he can keep his stores in Yakima and do that there. He doesn't need to bring it in here for, for us. And so I just encourage you to stand strong and to, just to say no, because it is a moral, ethical choice. We don't need the money, we can find other ways to find the money for the city. We need to help our citizens and our future for our city. Thanks.
I'm Paul Jobson, I live at forty five oh four Desert Cove, West Richland. Been in here about thirty years. I'm a construction worker and I've quit jobs because of people doing pot, because it's not been safe for me as a construction worker to work with them. And I am not real good at speaking or understanding this process very well. But for educationally wise, I would just want you to think about this. If there was another, if there's another situation in the city of West Richland's history that you've done these processes that you've done with this, I'm not sure that you have sidestepped things like you have with this. And I don't, maybe not saying it correctly. Like I said, I'm not well spoken. But anyway, I want you to think about that and see if you've done this process with other situations. Thank you.
Nelson House? I see that we, we have, yes, ma'am.
Senator Dobson, I live at three eight two six Mountain Meadow Court. My husband and I never did receive the survey. Some of you spoke to thinking that it was valid, but I don't understand how that could be if many of the citizens never even received it. I have social media, I have email, never received it, never saw it. I live on the street right next to the pot shop that is currently there. We've lived there for twenty-ish years. It, it has not been a positive experience. I would never want to live near a pot shop. I don't think anybody on the council would want to live right next to a pot shop or on the street right next to it. And if I were to ever buy another home, I would never go and buy one near a pot shop. So we've all filled this room and asked you to vote no over and over and over again. I ask you to remember that. Please don't think about what you, what you like personally. You're here to represent us, so please vote no, because we've all said no over and over. Thank you. Please don't think about what you, what you like personally. You're here to represent us. So please vote no, because we've all said no over and over. Thank you.
Nelson House that has not already spoken?
Um, I live at six zero zero one Kilaway Drive. My name is Camry Christensen and I'm in eighth grade and I go to Enterprise Middle School. Two kids in the past two weeks have gotten suspended for having drugs on them or being high in class. So think about that. Eighth graders and one of them was a sixth or seventh grader.
Nelson House? I see we do have a hand up virtually, so we'll go to the virtual audience this evening. Uh, I see a Dusty Howard. Stephanie, would you please? Unmute Dusty and Dusty, you can lower your hand so we don't get confused. And then you have the floor for three minutes.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
All right, thank you. Um, first, I'd just like to thank you for your time and I'd also like to um. Make sure that uh. There's a lot of misinformation being said tonight and I just, I hope that everybody can just take a moment to try and educate themselves further. And I would also like to request the city council read the email that I see, I submitted um, yesterday aloud after I'm done with my comment, if that's possible. I am also wanted to share a personal experience and I was really alarmed. By Dr. Marsh's comments and I, I feel for his personal experience, but I don't think that his personal experience should account for statistics. Out there. And I would, I would argue as a fellow medical professional that there are some actual benefits, health benefits. And I would also ask that the same community that's so against. A revenue or income for the city, um, especially with something that's actually legal in our state and viable within close to city limits. That, that they just ask themselves to um, further educate themselves. It's not always that way. And if you have that same animosity, I would like to see the same fever for alcohol and cigarettes because those are far more damaging. Now, I also live next to a convenience store for quite a while in my early days back in West Richland in two thousand and four. And there was a lot of crime, a lot of accidents. So I would say the same thing. For anybody that lives near any kind of convenience store or place where there it's public. Now, as for the marijuana and THC, um, I will share this experience, personal experience. One of my twin sons had medically intractable epilepsy. For three years, he had three to twenty plus seizures a day. And we had a, such a severe case that um, the neurologists of Washington State would confer every quarter and discuss difficult cases and his was discussed. He had a VNS implant placed. He was on two different medications, one of them which wasn't even licensed to be used under the age of eighteen. My son suffered. And it got down to the point where they were either going to do an intervention through his brain, which was done in another state. Or they could offer Depakote. Now, as a registered nurse, I know the full effects of Depakote. And I discussed with his pediatric neurologist, wouldn't it be better at this point to discuss CBD or marijuana THC? And he said, I cannot prescribe it because at the time it wasn't legalized in the state. But he did support my decision to pursue that. And I, I would just, I understand there's a lot of fear and I understand that there is a lot of um, you know, concern about, you know, property value and for safety. But remember, these are facilities that are licensed by the state and the revenue comes back to the city. This is not always about just revenue, but it's also ease of accessibility for elderly, for people that suffer from anxiety. There is a lot of judgment that I've been hearing tonight, even I'm sorry, from some of our own council members. And I would like you, just, I'm asking you, please do a little bit more education on this. This is a lot of archaic talk about people that use marijuana are lazy or incompetent. That is not the case. And, and, and this is not a store that's going to be delving out to the children. So I would just ask that people become more educated and I really appreciate you taking the time to listen to me. Could you please also read my email this evening? Thank you.
And I see we have Roy Cullen, if I pronounce that right. Roy, you can lower your hand and Stephanie will unmute you. And you have the floor for three minutes, Roy.
Those who do not remember history are condemned to repeat it. I'm thinking in particular of the Eighteenth Amendment nineteen twenty. Which was repealed in nineteen thirty-three, the Twenty First Amendment. Partly because uh, you had uh, mob taking over the alcohol. And people drinking things that weren't really healthy for them. So uh. It makes me think of the doctor's comment about the fentanyl laced marijuana. It falls into that category. And. In the early seventies. Richard Nixon started the war on drugs, which seems to be going on forever and ever. And Dr. Phil might ask you, how's that going for you? So taking a, a new look at how one approaches. Mind altering substances might be well advised. Thank you very much.
Yep. Next I see Audra Bird. Audra, if you'd un, we'll unmute you and if you'll lower your hand, please. You'll have three minutes to address counsel.
Hello, this is Audra Bird and I live on South Highlands in West Richland. And um, I'm sorry for my voice. I have a little bit of a cold, but I just wanted to um, comment for a minute. Um, the previous. Female speaker, Ms. Howard, actually is not a West Richland resident. And so um, I feel frustrated that although she's one of the only people that was um, pro. Bringing in uh, more pot shops. She doesn't even live in the city of West Richland. Also. We are, no one is advocating or saying that pot is not legal. It, it, it already is legal here. Anyone can have access that needs it for medical purposes. And we don't need to have more pot shops in our community in order to achieve. Those purposes that people that want to have it for medical reasons. We do not need to have more shops in West Richland in order for them to be able to have access to those things. So. I just wanted to add my voice that I would prefer our community to stay family oriented. And to not bring in additional pot stores to our community. Thank you.
Yep. Stephanie, I don't see any, I do not see any more hands up on my screen. Is there any more virtual hands up on your side?
Uh, I do not see anyone, no.
All right. Thanks, everybody for your comments. Much appreciated. Now, if I can uh. Resume the councils. Already had conversations in regards to that and please, uh, Mayor Pro Tim, uh. You, you've made your motion. There is a second. For clarification, would you read that again, just for clarification of what that entailed, please?
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor. I moved to postpone final action on ordinance twenty-six dash twenty-three. Until after the first regular city council meeting, following certification of the advisory vote. Held for the residents' opinion on a proposal to either allow recreational, recreational cannabis retail sales. Within the city of West Richland or to prohibit it.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Time has gone by and I just wanted to bring that back to the council's attention. Councilmember Moran, you have your card up.
Thank you. Um. I would like to say thank you to, again, everybody that has spoken. I, it, I can't tell you how much we appreciate hearing your voices. I feel like. At this point, I am more edging towards thinking that we should do an advisory vote for the purpose of the fact that. While currently we've heard. Probably somewhere around over the last several meetings, maybe. Eighty-five, I know there's a lot of folks that have come to more than one. It is something that I would be interested in hearing where it would be a much larger number of people that we would be hearing from. So that's kind of where I'm at right now. And uh, just for clarification also, um. I am uh, familiar, at least somewhat with Ms. Howard and she does in fact live in West Richland. Cause I saw her move in.
I don't know which one of you two went up first, but Councilmember Bloom?
Hi. Unfortunately, there's a lot of money behind marijuana sales. And unfortunately. Voters, in my opinion, are stupid. I mean, after all, they elected some of us. But I, I, they fall into three categories, but that's, that's another subject. In some jurisdictions, a lot of money went behind candidates to replace us. Because we want to get candidates that would be pro marijuana. And voters would not see that coming, so to speak. So from that standpoint, the advisory ballot, uh. Has some, well, would put some weight on it, but then a lot of money could go against that as well, trying to sway people one way or the other. And we know which side the money can be on. What I would suggest instead. And we, we paid for how many surveys, Mr. Mendal? We paid for four? We've paid for three surveys. Three surveys. And. We could, we could do a survey. He, the, the surveyor has promised improvements. On his methodology and not have the same hundred and twenty. Screw ups that we had last time. And we definitely have gotten the community engaged. That I would suggest we don't necessarily need to spend the voting money. But let's do a single question survey. Spend our five thousand dollars, which I think the surveys were each, is that correct? Was it fifteen for, for the three you don't remember? I, what? Ten for the three? Yeah, okay. I, I think we use that, but overall, my concern goes down to is um. We are only temporarily here. Some of us longer, more temp, less temporary than others, but. Anyway, the uh, you know, I, I, let's go back and forth. We might want to consider not, I mean, truthfully. We have talked about this many times. I would rather spend seventy thousand dollars asking for a levy lid lift. Then, then seventy thousand dollars asking. Watching the money flows on the marijuana issue. So that's my two bits, just explaining why it would go either way. I mean, if we have a vote, well, maybe. Maybe it'll go the right way. But I don't necessarily trust. Trust the outcome of elections, so.
Councilmember Smart?
Wow, um. So I, I've, so we, we had this comment period, uh, ostensibly to comment on whether or not we should uh. Be in favor of Mayor Pro Tim Brink's proposal to. Delay the vote tonight and to have an advisory vote in the future. Heard both, good arguments of both sides. I, I would love to get this over with tonight. And, and vote on it. I have not heard from my fellow council members with the exception of possibly one, perhaps two. Any, any information that tells me that which way they might be tending to vote. I've been very tight lipped. I have not been, so they know my position. So the question I am faced with is, do I trust uh, that they will follow um. My sentiments in this issue or, or vote uh, for, you know, allowing more pot shops in West Richland? I don't know. So um, it would be a lot easier if we, if they were, if we were open and honest with ourselves and had a discussion, but that may not be something that. I cannot demand that. So I, 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 I look at the risk. With the information I have. I understand the idea of a lot of money going behind a uh, a, a, a September, a November vote. That's given to the people to make a choice that, I mean, it's amazing um, how well marketing works with the average citizen. Um, it's a little bit sad. I, I'd like to think everybody did research, but people are very um, swayable. And a lot of effort could be put in, so I, I understand that. I also understand the um. The, the danger of maybe proceeding with a vote tonight and the opportunity to perhaps. Engineer the situation, uh, it, to the, to the favor of those against the pot shop. So. This is a tough, tough decision. I just want to vocalize that this is not easy. I, I, I don't want you to think that um. I, I want to keep uh, the maximum chance of, of my position being um, favored. So, so I, I, I would suggest that there is one other option to consider here. Which I present counsel as possibly an amendment to Mayor Pro Tim Brink's thoughts, which is to. I, is to vote tonight. And I guess that, that's a if then statement, right? If, if, if people vote um. Uh, in favor of this, uh, or if the council votes in favor of this ordinance amendment. I think there's an opportunity to um. I, I don't know. I guess I'm, I'm a little bit confused as to what, what opportunities we have. To um, engineer our future of this community. Because I, I'll tell you that one of the big dangers of voting uh, in favor of, of the ordinance at hand. Of the amendment is that, as has been pointed out by members of the audience in our community. There's nothing that keeps that. Direction from moving into a direction that allows multiple pot shops, right? Multiple competitors, multiple neighborhoods that are affected by pot shops in the future. Our zoning map is not cast in concrete. It just absolutely is not. Future councils can come in and change it as they wish. We may even change it. I think that there's, there's. That this, this hazard, if you want to call it that, this impact, I'll call it, the impact to our community is far greater than just the one shop. So. I'll, I'm going to reserve my um. My comment on whether to vote for action today or not. I'd. Love to hear other council members' feelings and thoughts on this. So I'll, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Councilmember Hayes?
Thank you, Mayor. I am in favor of the advisory vote. When, when I spoke this last time, um, we have to look at the community as a whole. We have seventeen thousand eight hundred people. And yes, um, the ones that are here and I appreciate all of your input. And, but I think we've been saying all along and you guys have, the, the public has also said, you know. Listen to us, but let's put it out and we'll listen to everybody. And then it is the vote of the people. That will be listening to with doing the advisory vote. So I am in favor of that. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Hayes. Mayor Pro Tim Brink, one more time, we'll move on.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I obviously support taking an advisory vote. One citizen, one vote. They talk about the survey as possibly being flawed or not accurately reflecting the views of the citizens. Well, I would not support doing another survey if that is the concerns of those individuals in this room, at least not on that topic. So I once again urge my fellow council members to consider my motion and to vote on it. Because this way we can get a clear definitive response from our citizens. No ambiguity, no equivocation. Let's find out what everyone. In addition to the thirty-six people in this room, what everyone in this city wants.
One, one last quick uh, comment on that. Um, Mayor Pro Tim Brink communicated that, that if we were to take an advisory vote. That somehow that might put this to rest. And so I would challenge council and our staff to explain, or even maybe not right now, but in the future. And so I would challenge council and our staff to explain, or even maybe not right now, but in the future. In between now and some future advisory vote, let's, let's figure out how this could possibly be put to rest. I mean, if you have a way to, I mean, right now, as far as I know, a, a future potential proprietor could come and make this request all over again next week. So what, do we have a plan?
Um, if I may respond, councilmember Smart, I think what we are looking for here, what I'm hopeful of, is that with this council, these seven individuals, it's not going to change for at least two years. And so for the next two years, I think it would not be prudent for an applicant to put in a, a application, given the current structure of the council and the outcome of an advisory vote and the outcome of a vote, final vote on the ordinance. That's my thinking on it, sir.
I appreciate that, thank you.
We have the motion, we have a second, we've had conversation. All in favor of Mayor Pro Tem Brink's motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, like, sign, please.
Aye.
Aye.
So we have a three, four as to an advisory vote. Okay. So with that, we're going to move on, and we do not have any unfinished business this evening. But we do have new business, which would, the swearing in of three council members, Mayor Pro Tem Brink, Councilmember Fettow, and Councilmember Moran. So I'm going to, so I'm going to do all three of you at the same time, but I'm going to put down the ground rules. First of all, when I, when I say aye, say your name, not everybody else's name. And then when we get to the council position, just state your council position, okay? Do you remember which one it is? Just the number. So if you join me up front, please, I will have to swear on you. Kodak moment, so do you have your Kodak stuff ready over there, staff? So please raise your right hand. Aye. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington. And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of office of
Discharge the duties of the office of
City of West Richland, council position.
City of West Richland, council position states.
According to law
According to law.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Thanks, sir. All right, that brings us to the second and final citizen public comment. You'd like to provide comments to the city council, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes. We'll start with in-house first and then move to virtual. Anyone in-house?
Hello again, my name is Still Jennifer Page, and I still live at 4614 Snowy El Court here in West Richland. I would just like to get recorded and heard by all of you in response to some of the comments that comparing cannabis retail shops within or near residential neighborhoods being compared to alcohol being available in like convenience stores or whatever you want, you know, grocery stores, whatever, near residential neighborhoods. You might recall 10-ish years ago, when the state did away with state-owned liquor stores and they became available to whoever. There was some folks who tried to place a liquor store right here in Bird Hill next to Enterprise Middle School, Behind Yokes, in that little strip mall where there's a vet and I think Edward D. Jones and nail shop, something like that. And what you may not know, because it never got put in, was that it didn't go in because there was a group of residents from Bird Hill who got together, some of which who spoke tonight about this, they've now left. We got together and said, not in our backyard. Alcohol's been legal for a long time, we've heard that. But that doesn't mean we want it in our backyard. Same with this. So anyways, my two cents, just to remind you that yes, alcohol and cannabis are similar, they're dissimilar. We didn't want alcohol in our neighborhood either, so.
My name is Nino 6783 Caspian Place, and I must say that one thing that I think at least people that are here today took time to be here, what we've learned is we're not heard. That, that there's, you know, you're listening to us, but you're not hearing what we're saying. And I really pray, and I'm going to do everything that I can do to make sure that people actually do come out and vote when you will spend all this money. And I'm a believer, and I think people should vote, but what we've witnessed in the last few elections, 30%, 36%, it's embarrassing, and it's not worth our time or money. And I think that you're just holding this thing over the citizens, I think so many of us are just ready to move on and live in peace for at least two years. Thank you.
Kevin Chumaker, 1708 Elmwood Avenue. I would first like to say thank you to all of you, you have a difficult position. I appreciate that you volunteer your time, far more than I'm investing into this subject and other subjects that you have to research and, and put the time in. So I want to say thank you. I'm not happy, but I do appreciate what you do. I would like to point out though, and this is just my perception, so it may not mean anything. But from my perception, you have now set a precedent. And that precedent is if the subject is difficult, or if people are passionate about it, it should go to an advisory vote. So moving forward, you may want to have a discussion amongst yourselves on what's going to be the new standard for, for what should require an advisory vote or not. If there was a vote tonight, at least I know where the council stands. And there's a lot of things that happen locally, statewide, nationally, and in the world that I don't agree with, and I can't change it. 17,800 people, one vote, everybody has a voice, yes. But that doesn't mean we get what we want, and that's what grownups do. They accept the fact that I'm not always going to get what I want. And I can live with that, because hopefully, I'm a grownup. But I do want consistency. And from, from my point of view, if you're, if a subject is difficult and the survey tells you one thing, doesn't tell you something, and that the, the outpouring from the public is great enough that it becomes an even more difficult decision, that it has to be an advisory vote, then my expectation going forward is that every time you have a difficult decision or an expensive decision, that should require an advisory vote. That's my two cents, that's where I'm standing. Once again, I do honestly appreciate all that you're doing, because I wouldn't want to be in your seat, because you're taking a lot of heat, and I appreciate that. I can have a relationship with people that I disagree with, if I know where they stand. And an advisory vote, I can appreciate that approach too, because then you are getting the pulse of the people. But that's not how we function. Because otherwise, everything would be a Facebook survey followed by an advisory vote, and then at the end of that year, everything would get decided, and that's how we would make, that's how we would run our country, that's how we would run our state, and that's how we, we would run our local communities. So thank you again, good night.
Leg's okay now. David Cole, 1710 Elmwood Avenue. Hey, you, you guys have had, I want to second what he said, you probably never hear. Thank you for most people who are normally up here raising issues. And so seriously, I mean that when I say thank you for, for your work here. I would ask that you figure out a way to bind yourself to the results. You're going to go pulse the community and, and find out from the citizens how we feel about this, take an advisory vote. I would hope that it would be more than just, ah, okay, we took a vote, and now we're still going to vote the way we feel. Chain yourself to the results of that, and, and like the man said, you may, we may live with unpopular decisions. But it, it seems prudent to me that if, if, if we're going to pulse the community, then then there should be some binding feature to that. Thanks.
Kelly Smart, 400 South 54th Avenue. Some of the common state medical uses of marijuana and their benefits, the probide. If that's not being taken away, they have the hospitals and doctors that give them that, that this is for recreational marijuana and others uses. I spent my, and they also mentioned that we did not do our, our research, I spent much time researching and presented that earlier of my research of what the effects of marijuana, marijuana does on children and everyone. There is no upside to marijuana, I pray that even with an advisory vote, you would choose to vote no, because you don't want even one child, or even your child, to ruin their lives with drugs, not even marijuana.
Pat Dobson, 610 South 54th. I remember in the library, that used to be City Hall. And I remember standing up and having this conversation. And I remember the gentleman that's running the cannabis shop, or Vana, whatever it's called. He stood up and he says, I'm going to get it, you watch. And he did, he found a county donut hole and got the county to let him have a license. We had voted on that, and we put a moratorium on it. And now all of a sudden, it's come again. And we've come, and we've come, and we've come, and now you put it to vote until September or November. You're, what's happening is the people are quit coming because they're getting tired of saying the same thing over and over again. You had a moratorium, and now this is a little bit different. You're not voting whether to have pot or not, you're voting whether to get a license from the city, not the county. It's a big difference. We're not, I personally am not against marijuana, I have family members, I have friends that use it for health issues. It's the fact that they want it recreational. And that's all I got to say.
No, excuse me, anyone else this evening? Okay, moving on to anybody that is virtual, I see we have Roy going. If you will lower your hand, and then Stephanie will unmute you, you have three minutes to address council.
Want to congratulate you on putting us to vote, a group in Switzerland where we have a hybrid democracy. There's a direct democracy. It is both secret vote as well as a show of hands. And the Swiss, they value consensus, and it takes a long time. So I, I don't think you should be all that concerned about how long it's going to take if it gets you to a, a more agreeable solution. Thanks.
Stephanie, I do not see any more virtual hands, do you? Or star nine phone calls?
I see one more.
Hey, I see Jeff. If you'll lower your hand, Stephanie will unmute you, and you'll have three minutes to address council. Go ahead. Jeff, you got the floor, three minutes? Are you there, Jeff? I think we lost Jeff. Stephanie, do you still see him there? I do not.
Jeff, will you please select to unmute yourself?
You unmuted himself, Stephanie?
Uh, he did not.
Still muted?
I've asked several times to, for him to unmute via Zoom.
Jeff, we have you unmuted here at this house, you need to unmute yourself on your Zoom, please. If you can't figure that one out, we'll go ahead and move on. Unmute yourself, Jeff, on your end. Apparently the malfunction of the junction there. Jeff, one more time, then we're going to move on, Jeff, unmute yourself, please.
Bottom, bottom left corner.
Bottom left corner on your Zoom. All right, we're going to go ahead and keep on going. Stephanie, do you see anybody else besides the unmutable Jeff?
I do not.
Okay, very good. So we're going to go ahead and move on to staff and council announcements, reports, and comments. We'll go ahead, if staff has any comments this evening, please place your card, I'll recognize you. Chief Gregel?
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, council, good evening, community that I serve. Today, I just want to give a report and say thank you to everybody while I was gone off the FBI Academy for all the work that they've done, especially Acting Chief Commander Jared Kelly, and the rest of the team, finance, the, there's a lot of stuff that happened in the 11 weeks I was gone, and, and they took care of business, and they did it well. So I just want to start by saying that, I'd imagine the question is, how was it? It was fantastic, it was an experience I can't explain, other than it was a one in a lifetime chance to do something I never thought I'd be able to do. I took graduate level classes on counterintelligence leadership, emotional intelligence, constitutional law, and conflict in law enforcement, as well as I made friends with from all over the world. My networking group is much larger than it ever has been before. It paid off while I was there, at one of the cases of a missing child, one happened here in West Richland. FBI reached out to me while I was there. The connections were happening. By that afternoon, the child was safe, and we had this, the child. So it just, it reinforced the importance of the networking for our city, not only for, for the department, but for our community. Because we don't have all those available resources that are out there, and the FBI is a great organization as far as resources for our community. I also want to thank the FBI, I know they're probably not listening right now, but a special thank you to Peter Orth, the one that nominated me, as well as, he's not FBI, he's retired. That nominated me as well as, I don't know if you guys know this, but the graduate level classes I took, the five that I did take and everything else, was paid for by the FBI, that did not come out of the city's budget. So I just wanted to just point that out, that they took on that bill and took care of me for 11 weeks. So that's all I have to say, unless anybody has any questions. And again, thanks for everybody that helped out along the way while I was gone, I really appreciate it.
If you want to talk to the community care fund monies that, and, and what was on the news, if anybody didn't catch news, they had smiling faces from the City of West Richland PD, chief?
Yeah, so Toyota has been recognizing law enforcement. I think it was started earlier this year, I just don't know the exact month it started, but they were asking each jurisdiction to give an employee that, an officer that, you know, is really taking care of business, has really shined above the rest. We were fortunate this year, unfortunately, at the news thing that we announced, our employee of the year was actually We were fortunate this year, unfortunately, at the news thing that we announced, our employee of the year was actually Roman K. I don't, I'm not gonna try to embarrass myself by pronouncing his last name, but Officer Roman is, has really done a fantastic job. We had already selected him with our peers. So when they asked for an officer to recognize in the region, it was a no brainer. He was our officer of the year. So what they did was Toyota said, we can make a decision on $500 of the money they want to donate as a department to an organization. And we did it to the Community Care Foundation. Roman got to pick also one and, and, and he picked the Community Care Foundation. So they received a thousand dollars to help out the community. And obviously anybody that's heard us talk about the Community Care Foundation, they provide and help raise money for community members in need. And our officers are out there on the road every day, twenty four seven. And when there's a need, they have the access and the ability to just make those decisions to purchase any needs that they see. Roman brought up one during that news and I didn't get to see the news yet. I, I was doing other things today, but, uh, he brought up a story that of a family he put up in a hotel with that money. And it's sad to say that I guess the, the children hadn't taken a shower for long enough because he made a comment to his mom when they did put him up in the hotel. Does that mean we get to take a shower tonight? So this is just one of the, one of the moments in time that our community gets to, our officers get to help take care of the community with all the volunteers and help. And I know we have several volunteers right here tonight and just thank you to the whole board. I appreciate the whole Community Care Foundation. Mayor, thank you for reminding me about that because that was a fantastic moment. I, next year, I think in July, Toyota said, what they do is they take the past candidates of each agency and they pick one. And that individual will get to, I think, donate $4,000 to a charity. And I understand maybe runner ups also get some money below that to put it again toward a charity. So it's just fantastic. Thank you Toyota for doing this and recognizing the officers out there, out there in the region, doing this work every day to take care of our, our community. So.
And just a little update, the Toyota has a new owner as of last year. And he's stayed very strong in his commitment to the community region wide. And also has said that he's gonna step up and even do more than the previous owner, which did a wonderful, a lot of wonderful things for the community. So this gentleman is, is a stellar guy. And he really likes to, you know, give it back to the, the community, people who make him successful. Do you have something else, Chief?
Mayor, thank you. One more thing. Oh my gosh, gosh, it's just slipped my mind.
Not my age, what?
Yeah, I don't know. Apparently I need to go to sleep. I'm still, you know, on East Coast time, but anyway, all right, sorry about that. Um, yeah, good stuff.
All right. Thank you, Chief. We'll come back to you when you have that come, come back to you. Mr. Slade.
Yeah, just want to update tonight. We opened bids for waterline replacement project. This is the Shalan Arlington Fallon North forty six. This is one we put on hold two years ago. We didn't, because of costs and delays. So the good news, it seems like the big bid climate is getting back to normal. We had nine bidders, which is, I can't tell you the last time we had a project go out that had nine actual bids. Seven were below the engineer's estimate and the low bidder was a hundred and eighty thousand under our engineer's estimate. So delaying it actually paid out really well for us. And so you'll see that at the January sixteenth city council meeting to award that contract. And then from there, we'll see when they're gonna do it, but it's scheduled to be completed by November this year. So, good news.
And I think the memory has re-entered Chief Grego's mind.
Yeah, it's, it was such a big issue. I just want to thank the community for the voting for the public safety sales tax. I'm committed to making sure that that money's put to good use for our community. Not only with networking, with the rest of the region, because that's what we do. But definitely in the city of West Richland, keeping employees on. So thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Eric.
Speaking of old, my watch just told me it's my bedtime. So I'll keep my comments brief this evening. But I just want to recognize Todd Blevins. He's our community building official. And he received a recognition from the Northwest Housing Association, recognizing and appreciating him for being the housing advocate of the year. So I want to just give him some kudos and, and acknowledge him publicly for all of the hard work that he does behind the scenes in trying to advocate for housing in our community and in our state. I know that our state legislators have just as difficult as decisions as you all do. And one of those unfortunately has been raising the cost of housing with the energy code. And so Todd's done a lot of effort in trying to combat that. Unfortunately, to no avail with our, our legislators, but want to thank him for all of his hard work and dedication to our community and, and being willing to get out there and help our community as it continues to grow and build.
Thank you, Eric. Appreciate it. Councilmember Bloom? Oh, excuse me, just a second. I see, I see Stephanie's got her card. We need to put it on a pedestal a little higher. Stephanie, you're up.
And so I think Roscoe slightly alluded to, uh, we will not be having a council meeting on January second. So our next regular council meeting will be on January sixteenth.
Councilmember Bloom?
Mr. Mayor, we had talked earlier about not allowing online public comment. Are we gonna move forward with that? I mean, we, we did get a couple of comments today. One wouldn't go through. There are some bots out there that are attacking city council meetings and, and it, it becomes a freedom of information issue. Are we going to move on that?
I've had a conversation with Stephanie and Jessica in regards to potential liabilities. And we seem to be able to manage it as we have had no issues in the past. We're not as large as some of those huge cities that do have bots. So.
College place.
We, we, we recognize an issue and we can shut that issue down during the, the, the time that they're rambling on. So we have the ability. And if, if they are not abiding by the ground rules of whether they're using the language or threats or something in that nature. Stephanie, if you have anything else you might want to add to it too, that's fine. You can go ahead.
Um, yeah, so I am familiar with the, the issues that have been happening at other jurisdictions. Our clerk network discusses those quite frequently. And at this time, with the technology that we have in place, I don't foresee that being an issue. We can potentially upgrade our version of Zoom if it does become an issue. But I also know that the, the state is pushing in their OPMA regulations to encourage as much participation as possible. And that would include allowing for virtual attendance.
Okay, on a, on a unrelated note to that, just to reiterate the report, I talked about the impact of recreational cannabis legalization, cannabis use. Identified, these were two Canadian studies. Or one of them was a Canadian study identified two point six times the number of emergency room visits for adolescents due to cannabis. Rates cannabis increase. Visits did show an abrupt increase following the approval in Colorado. But the, the Canada one was, it was approved in two thousand eighteen. The study was two thousand twenty two. So it, it, the problem comes down to is the edibles, the more they're in the community, the more children will get to them. So I just wanted to point that out. This is a, like I said, the impact of recreational cannabis legalization is a National Institute of Health Study. And it is a wealth of information that looks at all aspects of it. Thank you.
Councilmember Bloom? Councilmember Hayes?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I just want to acknowledge the ceremony yesterday. It was an honor to be there and be part of it. And what was so nice about it, Roman had no idea it was happening. He thought he was gonna go do a presentation. And then at first he thought he was doing it at the jail. He didn't know if he's doing it at the jail. That didn't make sense. And so it was so cute. Just, he was just taken back. He didn't know what to do. So it was a great tribute to him and everything he does because he's loved by so many in this town. Then I want to also thank the West Richmond community, the city. We put on Operation We Care Tri-Cities that takes care of veterans, seniors. And we work with the school districts here and get families that are in need. And so we have eight veterans and twenty seniors and fourteen families with a total of forty seven kids in that. And we're able to get them toys and food and a Christmas dinner and a lot of other items that, that they need. And so we couldn't do it without, like the city of West Richmond, they adopted some families. And and so these, just to see the faces of all the kids and everything, and it's, it's so wonderful. You guys did a great job. And so I just want to say thank you to everybody. A lot of community people donated canned goods and, and toys and everything and clothes. And then the fire district, they donate Operation Candy Cane. They bring all the food back to my location. And we give all that out. So without this community, we wouldn't be able to serve that many people. So. And then Bikes for Tikes, we got, we got bikes this year and we got coats from Knights of Columbus to help out. So thank you all. It was, it's really moving to see each year how much it grows and how many more people we can serve. Thank you.
Okay, just a quick thing on that. Mr. Mayor?
Oh, excuse me.
Over here. I just want to clarify that it's not the city, it's the employees for the city. I saw the question. So it was all employees that donate personal money.
Sorry about that.
Thank you for the clarification, Eric. As, as the FBI Academy was paid for by the FBI. Alrighty, perfect. All right. Councilmember Moran?
Thank you very much. I did not think to get the numbers, but the Community Care Foundation also does annual now holiday gift giving where there are gift cards that were given out to, I believe the schools, the police department. I can't remember where else, but I'll get those numbers for you at the January meeting so that y'all can hear more about the Community Care Foundation because there's a lot of good stuff coming out of there. And we always are looking for volunteers, putting on my little board member hat for that. So feel free to ask about the Community Care Foundation for that, to find out more volunteer options. Also, on December ninth, I participated in the elected officials training that was at our own West Richland Police Department station and other council members were there. It was really great that we were able to put that on as a city. I believe that we were able to benefit, not just because it was close to us, but in other ways. So I appreciate the city being able to put that together with Association of Washington City. And then I am also pleased to announce that December fifteenth, at the Benton Franklin Council of Governments meeting, not only was I elected to be the representative for the cities with, with a smaller number of population for the executive board, but I was also voted as the vice chair for two thousand twenty four for the Benton Franklin Council of Government. So I look forward to that and representing the city well at that. Also had the pleasure today of being at a luncheon that Benton Franklin Council of Governments put on for Lieutenant Governor Denny Heck, where he talked more about a study that he had worked with. If I could turn the page here. Getting out of the habit of licking my finger after COVID hit, so. With the my eyes are getting old, the Williams R. Reckelhaus Center, the that's with the University of Washington and Washington State University. They get together and they do different studies. And this study was on common ground for the common good. I have it here. If anybody'd like to borrow it, to kind of skim through it. I'm sure that he has more he can give out to folks and for council as well. But that was a really great thing to hear and myself was there. Also was Mayor Pro Tem Brink. So other than that, looking forward to the holidays, the new year. I can't believe it's already into the year. And I hope that everyone stays safe and has a wonderful rest of the holidays and end of the year. Thank you.
Councilmember Hayes, before I go back to you, I want to also recognize Stephanie for spending a Saturday with AWC at the meeting as well. So thank you, Stephanie, for that. I appreciate it. Councilmember Hayes, you had something to add?
Yeah, one more thing. I just want to give some notice now that there, there's some plans in work to bring a veteran cemetery to this area. We've been working on it for about a year now and had a lot of help with Eric. Really appreciate that. And Olympia, the VA have been over here from Olympia and from Spokane, the, the veteran cemetery that's up in Spokane. So we are going to have a meeting on January eleventh. Thank you, Tom, for letting us use the new police station and we're gonna invite the public so they can get information on it and see, so we can really see what the, what the mood is, how many people are for this, who wants to be involved with it. And so it's really exciting time, I think, for this region. And so I'm, well, you'll be seeing more things. We'll be putting a flyer out that talks about it a little bit. And you, everybody can come give their input or just come listen to see if it's something that you're interested in. So we, we're gonna invite everybody to come to that. So it's really exciting. Thank you.
Update there. Mayor Pro Tem Brink?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For those sixteen of you who have sat around for curtain calls, so to speak, I will take a minute just to explain a little bit more of my rationale for making tonight's motion. So I was faced with a lot of conflicting data, to be honest with you. We have a survey result which showed clearly from the survey itself, that two thirds of our citizens either strongly supported or didn't care. With only one third expressing strong disapproval for any cannabis within city limits. So that's one issue I had to deal with. Second issue is the survey itself. Many people viewed it as flawed or somewhat in error. And that's fine. I can accept that because many people spoke that they did not receive it or there were some problems with their responses or whatever the circumstances were. So that's part of my thinking. And then we have citizens present here. We had, I think, total of thirty six at one point tonight. And with very few exceptions, only two people, I think, spoke out somewhat in favor. We had a few online individuals. I think we had some in favor there, but clearly the vast majority did not support having retail cannabis in the city. So that in and itself conflicts with the survey data. So I'm a Navy engineer. That's what I was when I was in the Navy. I ran a propulsion plant onboard a frigate. And then I also served as a navigator. Conflicting data and that type of role causes issues and it can potentially cause problems. I don't want conflicting data when I'm trying to make a decision for the benefit of our citizens. So therefore I elected to put forth this motion. And I want to hear what the citizens truly want to say. Not what they think we should be hearing, either through you or through a survey, but what do they really feel? And as an FBI agent, I had to be very careful to avoid confirmation bias. And for those of you familiar with that term, that's a term where you tend to accept information that fits with your own beliefs or understandings and tend to reject information that otherwise conflicts with that. So I am very, very conscious about that. And that's why I made that move. So for the benefit of the sixteen that are here, you know a little bit more about my thinking. And I will make this commitment because I think Mr. Cole called us out on this. If the citizens vote against marijuana, cannabis in West Richmond, I will vote against it. You know my position? If the citizens vote in favor of it, I will vote in favor of it. So there we go. One more council member out in the open. You're welcome, Mr. Smart. So I look to you to determine which way we're going. And it was a difficult decision for me because of all of this conflicting information. Thirty six of you spoke out tonight, but in reality, that's point three percent of our entire population. So for me to draw conclusions based on fact, given my background, my experience and so forth, I want to gather as much fact as I can. And I see an advisory vote as being a clear path to that. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem, much appreciated. I see no hands up or other cards, so I will go to an executive session that we I see no hands up or other cards, so I will go to an executive session that we do not have this evening. Given the hour and, and Eric Mendenhall's watch told him it's time for Betty Bye.
Mr. Mayor, Ken, Ken has his hand up.
Put his hand up, okay. When I looked, you didn't have it up, Kim, but you got the floor now, sir.
Sorry, I was, I was running things like you would with normal citizens where everybody there gets to speak first and the one who's online comes up later. So I'm, I'm sorry that I couldn't be there tonight. I really wanted to be. We already had plans in motion. I'm actually sitting in a parking lot in passenger seat of my car in Winnemucca, Nevada. So anyway, what I wanted to say is I hope we can see people again at the January 16th meeting. I actually have lots of thoughts in my mind that I wanna collect and speak about the things that have been going on and some of the discussions that we had tonight. And I hope that people can show up and hear what I have to say at that time. Cause I think it's important that we are concise and everything like that. So hopefully, people will continue to come. I've appreciated seeing everyone there. It's great. And so that's that. Secondly, I'm sorry, Chief Grego, that I'm not there to see your smiling face. I'm glad that you're back home, I'm glad you had such a great experience and it's great to hear your report and your voice. So thank you again. Merry Christmas, happy holidays and happy new year for everyone. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Stoker, and safe travels to you and yours. So now you can go get your cold dinner and hopefully tap out for the night or get on the road again. So safe travels to you, look forward to seeing you when you get back home.
Thank you very much.
You're more than welcome. So with that, we will go ahead and conclude this night's meeting at 8:32. Thank you for everybody that has participated in council tonight and Merry Christmas to all. And remember the reason for the season.